My wife gets jittery too if she would.
Not even.
Just like coffee if she drank it straight. She gets jittery.
Alright guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, August 28th, 2025. We have Pastor Zach Terrell from Become Church here to do the invocation. If you guys could stand with me if you are able.
Father, we thank you once again for Spring Hill, Kansas, the place where we live and make our being. Lord, we pray that you would give us favor and blessing in our community. We pray that you bless our families and civic groups and the leadership that we have tonight. Lord, we pray for grace and wisdom as decisions are made that guide our lives. We pray for particularly humility and grace as we hear one another and listen and speak to one another over the budget and the finances and all the policies and the different things that will affect us as a community. Lord, we pray that you'd give us the very best outcome and that you would help us forward in a, in a teamwork oriented way that we could collaborate and that we would have your best. Lord, we pray that you would have your way in Spring Hill as it is in heaven. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Madam Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Ms. Feeback?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Throm?
Here.
Mary, we have a call.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a request to add a second executive session. Other than that, or any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved, second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
Quick question.
Sure.
The printed copy I have in front of me has an additional formal item. And the electronic one in front.
Let's see.
We got, consider approval of Bucyrus sewer agreement with Miami County Board of County Commissioners on the printed copy, but not on the electronic.
I think the printed copy is right. I think the electronic.
Electronic copy.
That's, well, that's not on tonight.
Okay, so that, that one is a scratch or a typo, excuse me.
Printed the wrong.
Okay.
The electronic copy on your computer, that's correct.
Okay, so scratch item. So if we can add on there, add the second executive session and then scratch.
Well, it's not on the.
Okay, we'll just scratch it on my sheet.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, go.
Uh, move, we approve the agenda as amended, second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation, excuse me, citizen participation. This is time when the public can come speak about whatever they would like to speak about. We did only have one person sign up, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak after he goes, that would be your time. So the first person on the list is Mr. Rodolfo Arvalo.
It's okay with you. I'd like to speak during the discussion.
I was gonna say, we might, we might offer that up there.
Sure. And if there's anyone else that wants to speak during the discussion item, if that's what you're here to talk about, that's fine. But if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about anything else, now would be your time.
When we say discussion item, are we talking about the public hearings?
Yeah, I think I talked about public hearing.
Yep.
Yeah. During the public comments on middle of that one. If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation this time and move on to the public hearing. This hearing is a hearing to exceed revenue neutral rate and a 2026 budget hearing. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mary. Tonight's an important step in the budget process when the public is invited here for a hearing to give their comment on the plans we're making through the 2026 budget, as well as, tonight, we've combined the budget hearing with the revenue neutral hearing. This is their opportunity for you to hear their opinion. I'm sure you're hearing opinions anyway, but this is a public forum for them to do so. I'm gonna show some slides real briefly and then I will step back. I plan to take notes and can answer anytime you want me to, or I can do that at the end, or before we do the revenue neutral resolution, however you prefer to do that. I want to remind everybody, we are not approving a budget tonight. This is a step in the process. The next meeting on September 11th is the night that you'll consider approval of the 2026 budget, and it will not be tonight. We want to hear their comments and make changes if necessary before you consider it for approval. Not going anywhere. Oh, let me see. Okay. I wanted to start first with what revenue looks like in the budget, and this is comparing the 25 budget to the 26 budget, and our revenue is increasing by just over 1 million, almost 1.1 million dollars. I sorted here in order of the amount of increase that services and fees for the, for 2024's budget, we exceeded fees related to builder development and permits and things like that by a million dollars. And in 2025, we're on track to do that a second time. So I felt like it was time that we took a bigger bite of that pie in the budget as opposed to leaving it to the end of the year, still being conservative, because of course we don't control the housing market or building market. And so I took about a $300,000 bump to the fees in the budget. The property tax increase is 308,000. That is the combination of the assessed valuation from the county as well as our mill levy. And I'll talk about mill levy a little further back, but the total amount of revenue we're receiving is a 7.7% increase from property taxes. Sales and use, I keep it steady with that 6%. It's been doing very well in 2025. You have a financial snapshot with you tonight. You can take a look at how sales tax is looking year to date. We took a dip in August. I have to study that a little bit. I think there's a normal dip in the year, but still performing well above 2024 levels. Interest, we switched how we handle our money. This is interest on idle money or the money in our bank account, if you will, and we are receiving about a 4% interest rate right now. I did temper this back a little for 26 because we don't know where the markets are going, so I didn't want to be, you know me, I'm a conservative budgeter, so I was a little conservative. And then other miscellaneous taxes like motor vehicles and RVs and payments in lieu and things like that, they're going to be about $99,000, which is about a 38% increase over normal. Those items all come from other outside agencies, are not estimates that I do, but information we were, we receive. Alcohol taxes in that as well. So then, let's talk about the expense side. The increase that we're seeing in the expense budget is 1,077, 78,000. As you all know, this is a people business. This is people providing services, and so the, the total people related are going up about 10%. I'll give you some more details on that in the next slide. We, we committed to some new debt in 24, which will make our, I'm sorry, 25, which will make our payment, and the first payment in 26, and that's about a $350,000 increase to the budget, or about 51% of what we've been transferring for debt. The other items, I won't read them to you because you can see, and you see them going up and down. For example, I was pretty heavy handed with legal in our 25 budget, and so I've pulled that back a little bit. Also, from our work session in June, we talked about legal and where it was gonna go, and I think we're gonna see, I think we're gonna be pleasantly happy with how that's gonna turn out for us going forward. Consulting is a category that doesn't often get used, and so a lot of that got transferred around to places where it really gets spent, and it's, so it's in professional services and engineering and other things like that. To give you some detail on the people part of this budget, the employee raises, the budget we've put here is about 4.4%, which is $132,000. We have some new positions in the budget. That would be two police officers and a new building official. We have enough growth happening in our town. We need more services, and so we've asked for that in this budget. And then our, our insurance, we're gonna see, we saw an increase in July. We'll see an increase next July. So you're seeing about a $240,000 increase, or about 19% for the two increases over time. Before I move on to mill levy, can I answer any questions for you about those two, revenue and expense?
If you go back to revenue, I'd like to ask a couple.
Okay.
So the 105,000, that's an increase to what we've earned in 25?
Yes, it's what we budgeted in 25 versus 26.
And that's just the general fund money that we were able to?
That's only on general fund. The sewer gets money, the debt, all of the funds get interest.
Okay, and then, property tax wise, were you able to break down what the difference like per?
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Hundred thousand or whatnot?
I did not, but I will have that for you for next time.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
And then go on to the next one for the, let's see, who else has a question on revenue? People related, I guess we can go to the next one, because that was where my question was. So, I'll just make a comment, I guess. I think we have to, something's gotta give here, and so if we're gonna have a 20, almost 20% increase in the medical insurance cost, I don't know if we could do a 4%, 4.5% salary raise, at least in my opinion. And then really, I thought we were kind of on pace to add maybe an additional officer a year, not two. So that's something I'd like to get everybody's feel for too on that, because those things, I think, could probably help us a little bit as far as cost goes for this year. So.
Okay.
Those are just some comments for.
Point six include the, the new positions at their?
Yes.
It's not a?
It's not just the rate increase. So any new positions we have?
Yeah, but it's still gonna be over, it's still gonna be.
It's still an increase, but it's not just on the rate or the amount we're paying. It includes additional positions. It also includes all health insurance, so vision, dental, all of our.
For family as well, though?
Yeah.
Is it for family as well, or is it just single?
It's both. It depends on what the employee, like I have all single benefits.
So is that included in it?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay, because just so everybody knows, they, anybody, we pay for the whole family's insurance. It's not just the single city employee.
That is budgeted by the person.
Yeah.
So if I get single and someone else gets family, it's budgeted that way. Anytime we have a vacant position, we assume they'll take the full family benefit, so sometimes that works out.
How much is that roughly a family plan?
Um, all benefits, health. It, it's about 33 to 35,000 dollars a year.
Yeah.
Per employee for their whole family.
And that's something that we did a few years, we did probably what, four years ago?
Yeah, three or four years.
Three to four years ago, and it's been a big, a big thing for the employees and a big way to retain employees as well, something that most cities are not offering. So it's kind of a big enticing factor when you have bigger cities like Overland Park or other areas that might be able to pay a little bit more money, but don't have benefits like this. So trying to do whatever thing we can do creatively to keep our really good employees that we have.
Yep, it's a really great benefit. It's also hard to undo.
Yeah.
You know, so it's a balance we'll hope we never have to worry about, but someday if we do, it's, it's a harder thing to undo.
Yep.
I had a question on the new positions, two additional police officers. Was the original ask three, or was it always two?
Um, there is one that was added in 25, and then the others, the other two will be added in 26.
Okay, so two is kind of the compromise, basically, because they asked for three originally, okay.
And part of the reason why we needed two is we were, we were behind several years ago, where we were short several officers. And so had we had, you know, one each year for several years, we wouldn't be in a position where we needed two more now.
We also, last year, eliminated a position so that we could move and change their pay scale and how their payment, their merit worked. And so we, they gave up a position for a year in order to accomplish what they needed to. And so we'll have that to make up at some point as well. Okay. Thank you. Then I'm gonna move to the mill levy half of the equation. And I wanted to show you, I have seven years worth of data up here, and I wanted you to be able to see the history. I think it's important when the folks are gonna come up and state their position on the budget, to make sure we have this history, that this council, like you guys started in 22, we've, we've actually decreased the levy, and in five years, we've decreased it about 4.5, almost, you know, four and a half mills. And over that period from 2019 to 2026, we are looking at about a 3.5% decrease. The proposed mill is 22.69. You compare that to our 25 mill, which is 22.97, and our proposed decrease is a, a reduction of .28 mills. You also have to look, obviously, we're talking about revenue neutral tonight. The revenue neutral rate normalized this year, and it is 20.747. So I think sometimes the counties send out those notices, and it looks like we're raising the rate when we are not raising our rates. We're still above revenue neutral, but we are reducing our rate over a quarter of a mill.
And I think that's what's so important for the public to know is that we are not raising the mill levy. In fact, we're proposing, and we've tried to every year to propose to lower the mill levy, and that's the goal of everyone up here, is try to lower taxes, not raise taxes. Now, once again, like we always say, we have no control over the county on whether they evaluate your house higher, and whether, so you could still be paying more taxes, but it won't be because the city raises the mill levy.
Right.
Which the assessed value was up.
Correct.
Yes.
From Miami Anderson, yeah.
Even though we're lowering our mill.
Right.
There will be more revenue to the city because of the change in evaluation. I did not do this split. I will. A big portion of that would be new to us, not just increasing existing homes, but adding more homes. And we, with Wiswell Farms, we've added quite a few in the last year, and other improvements made around the city. So it's a combination.
I think historically, what we've seen is when we have those big excise tax years, those are the years that the gap between revenue neutral and the mill levy are bigger, because you add so many more new houses. So.
The value goes up.
Just being cognizant of that, that's one reason we were able to lower it the way we were, but I think we need to look at that this year. That's what, that's why I wanted to know what the.
Yep, I will.
To see what the actual cost is to the existing residents.
Yeah, yeah, because it's hard to, we've had a lot of new houses the last couple of years, so it's hard to base it off of that one, you know, we've probably had already this year, probably at least 150 new houses, so it's.
Well, in my preparations for getting ready for the meeting tonight, I took a look at my report that I got from the county this last year. And obviously, when you look at the, what you pay in state taxes across the board, it's a, it's a larger number, but when you start looking at the individual entities that you're taxing, or being taxed by, the city specifically for me, based on this year's revenue neutral rate versus the proposed rate, my difference is 100, and, sorry, it was $98 would be the overall difference if we were, for my household specifically. I don't know how that applies to other people, based on their financial situations and the properties they own, but for me personally, in my household, the difference between revenue neutral and what's proposed is only $98.
That's why I typically ask for like, what the difference is per hundred thousand.
Right.
So then people can kind of do the math.
Right.
Right.
What it is. Because yeah, even that form we get in the mail is tough to understand the way that it's.
Yeah, and it's a little bit better this year than it was last year, but it's still.
Yeah.
It's still a little rough.
Yep.
So maybe go through and talk about revenue neutral a little bit more, because, at least from my understanding, what it is, is revenue neutral only means we're bringing in the same amount of money as we did last year. It's not a per household.
No.
Thing that we're talking about. So when you look at that, basically what it's saying is that the city didn't bring any more money in, you're, that's what that rate needs to be, and that's what that difference is. So really, that $98 probably isn't 98. What I'd like to see is get it closer to even for all the existing residents. So once I know that, then I could know what I can support as far as the mill levy goes. So for me, it's gonna be tough to make a decision on any mill levy until I know that.
Right. The, the key, the rate is calculated based on your new valuation, how much money you got last year from property taxes, and then it calculates a rate saying, this is the rate Spring Hill would need to achieve the exact same amount of revenue as they got last year.
So what was the dollar amount we got last year?
Um.
Right at 4 million, right?
Yeah, it was just under 3 million, 3,600, something like that, in the general fund, because we.
Well, no, I'm talking about the in property tax, added alarm.
I think that's right. I'm trying to go backwards.
The total figure she sent me a week or so ago was a little over 4 million. Yeah.
Right.
Four, 4 million.
Yes.
Forty, about 44. Yeah.
In all funds, yes. The data showed you, it's just general.
Yeah, take it by, you know, whatever was actually taxed last year, and then figure that out to see what that is. And for me, I think if we break it down by 100, I can kind of figure that out and figure out where it's gonna be. But, but yeah, so that's where, that's how I kind of back into the math for it. So what we look at tonight's gonna be what, what everybody up here agrees on a cap, but I think when we get to the next meeting, we're probably gonna, I'm gonna need a lot more information before I can agree to anything. So.
And as far as, and maybe explain revenue neutral rate again. I know some people.
You bet.
It's kind of a hard thing to understand, and it's more of a thing mandated by the state and federal level, but just so people kind of understand what revenue neutral rate is. I know you've kind of explained it a little bit.
You bet. The goal of revenue neutral is for the, the taxing entity, for us, the city, to receive exactly the same amount of tax revenue they got last year, based on their new valuation this year. So typically, if your valuation's going up, your revenue neutral rate's going down, because you need fewer mills to get the same amount of money. Their goal is for the cities not to receive more money each year.
But when, but for most cities, it's almost impossible to stay revenue. There's very few cities that go revenue neutral, because people are getting raises, expenses are costing more, projects are happening, infrastructure things are happening. So when you have all these things to try to spend, when all the expenses are going up, and then you're trying to spend the same that you spent the last year, it's virtually impossible.
Right.
Pretty much every city.
Think about your.
It does happen, but it's very rare.
I, I like to look at it as my household. At the end of the day, the city is a household. We have a budget we have to manage, and we have needs that we need throughout the year. And I don't know about anybody else in the room, but I have had a harder time paying for the things that I need this year than I did last year and the year before that, and the city's not immune to that situation at all.
Yeah, I would just like us to, you know, stay within what a normal household would.
Absolutely.
Increase in income rather than, we don't want to take up all of whatever they get in increase in income, and, but we need to do enough to make sure we can stay afloat. So just being responsible there is, I think, what we need to.
Finding the balance between raising taxes and.
And if we can consistently lower the mill levy every year.
Yeah, that helps a little bit.
Everyone up here, try to offset some of that valuation raise to try to lower that mill levy as much as we can. I think we'd all like to lower it even more than we have proposed.
I think we'll see some changes out of Topeka in 2026 related to mill levy. They worked hard on a cap this year. I think we'll probably see them attempted again and maybe be successful. So I think this is a good year to be conservative, because we don't know what it's gonna look like next year. We may be having elections to raise any mill levy and, and things like that. So yes, we want to benefit the taxpayer as much as we can, but we may be in a totally different situation in a year. I think you'll see that in a lot of the mill levy changes around both counties, for cities and schools and everything, that some that took, bit the bullet and went revenue neutral and really slashed. I think you're watching them swing back some, because it's, it's really eating their cash. You gotta, you gotta cut both sides of that equation if you're cutting.
Well, and from the cities I've heard of and counties that I've heard of that did go revenue neutral rate, they dipped into their reserves big time, and now they're, now they're struggling. And so now, now they're, like you said, kind of backtracking, and I doubt they will go revenue neutral again, because it's, it's, like I say, it's almost impossible to do in this day and age.
So my question for you is, so the proposed is the point two eight?
Yes.
What does that mean for citizens of Spring Hill?
I will have to send that to you. I will, I will have it and be happy to post it.
I'm just saying, all these numbers are up there, and I'm trying to think of the layperson that hasn't had an opportunity to totally grasp this, what the proposal means to them, how it's gonna hit their.
It means they, and I'm, I'm thinking on my feet, so I'm happy to sit down with a calculator.
If you can't answer.
If you think, if you think about this, a mill is worth 1,000, 1,000. So if you had $1,000, you would save .28, 28 cents. So if you have a $500,000 house, you'd be saving 500 times .28.
Right.
That's, that's what it means to a. That's, that's what it means to a
Person with
House, to a, a value of a home. And then I need my calculator.
Because it's more complicated, that valuations going.
Right.
Yeah.
So if you think about, that's, I think a hundred and 50 dollars. If your house was worth 500,000 and a 0.28, if I rounded it to 30, it's probably a hundred and 50 dollars for the year.
Thank you for doing that on your feet. I just
We'll see if I'm right.
I just want them to understand what that number means.
Absolutely.
And maybe when we come back to our actual, where we're actually deciding the budget.
Right.
Some of those numbers per hundred thousand.
Absolutely.
You know, how much it'll affect. So we can really break it down and see, you know, when, when you look at it, like you said, where it's $98 a year, while that still might be hard for some people, that's a little, little easier bullet to swallow.
Yeah, fixed income, it's hard.
Thousands. Yeah, oh, absolutely. A fixed income would make it the hardest.
Right. I will, um, yield the floor to the public so they can comment to you. Like I said, I'll take notes and be happy to comment back, uh, anytime you want me to. And, uh, look forward to hearing what the public has to say.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go ahead and open it to public comments. If you could, if you could just, uh, step up and state your name and your address. Um, we'll go ahead and have Rodolfo Aravalo go first and then anyone else in the audience that wants to, if you could just follow after that. And once again, state your name and your address, please.
Rodolfo Aravalo, 19419 West 200th Street in Spring Hill. And, um, my comments are provided as to assist you in terms of thinking about what you want to do. And I guess I look at things a little differently than, than, uh, Ms. Dunn does. But, uh, I always like to look at the fact that, uh, the revenue neutral rate would be 20.747. She's proposing 22.69. That's to me, an increase of 1.9 and change above what it is right now. I know that you like to look at the fact that your rate was 22-something last year. But that's, th- that number to me doesn't mean a thing. The thing is, if you didn't, if you go beyond the revenue neutral rate, you're asking people to pay more than if you just keep it at the same rate that it is now. And I always like to look at it in reference to the budget. So I know you're going to have a budget discussion, but I'm going to jump in and ask some questions. And I don't have all the data. I only have limited data that you provide. But from looking at your budget, uh, sheets, it shows that, uh, the estimated expenditures is going to be like 10 million, 145,000 dollars this year. But for next year, you're budgeting 13 million, 602,491 dollars. If I do the calculation, that's basically 3.4 million dollars more than you spent or you have expenditure for this year. To me, when I work it out, that's a 34% increase in expenditures. I can't believe we're proposing a 34% increase in expenditures. And as I quickly look at some of the detailed data, I find that in the, uh, community development department, you have a 311,000 dollar increase just in salaries. Okay? I was here when the, when that department had a discussion about their budget. And they didn't request 311,000 dollars in increase. It was a very modest increase. So my question is, why is it being raised by, which is almost 40% increase in their current salary budget? Okay? The same thing with the police department. You have an increase of, uh, 464,000 dollars. That's an increase of 19%. And I can understand, we need more police, so I can halfway support at least three quarters of that expenditure. But I think there's ways to cut so that the mill increase isn't as high. And I would ask you to seriously take a good look at where the increases are and whether they're necessary. If I look, for example, at the cemetery budget, it's a small budget. But last year, you, uh, allocated 65,000 dollars. They spent 35, or they're spending 35. But you allocated an allocation of 81,000 dollars. Does that make sense? They're not using it. So why are we giving them more money? I didn't hear a presentation from them, so I don't know why they need more dollars. You know, but that's another area that you can take a look at. And there's a number of things just like that if you go through the budget. Well, and also if you go through the budgets, and I don't under- fully understand how you do, uh, transfers from budgets. But you've got at least two budgets that if you look at their reserves or projected expenditures, they're going to be, have reserves by the end of the, of the year, next year, it totals up to 3.1 million dollars. Well, can any of those reserves be moved over to other more critical uses that you have? Like buying equipment or, and things like that. Those are just my comments and hopefully you take them in good stride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Going once, twice?
Like for the public?
Yeah, for the public. Or if any of you guys up here have anything to say.
Can you address some of his questions? Yeah, thank you.
Um, I always appreciate, um, Mr. Aravalo's comments. He does his homework and I appreciate that. I'm careful with the revenue neutral using the word increase because we are not increasing mill levy. We are reducing it a quarter of a mil. And so I'm careful with that. And so he and I don't have the same viewpoint on that and that's fine. When you look at the 3 million he talked about, when you look at the budget form, the budget is by the state of Kansas, a, your authority to spend money. If you don't budget it, you cannot just, oh, an emergency happens and you spend money. So one of the things this forum does is it spends out all of your cash. And so I purposely, on the general fund page, which is page, uh, six, one of the sixes, one of the first pages, page, uh, 6B, I purposely put the cash on a separate line because it looks really odd when the general obligation department suddenly goes from what they're really spending in '25 to an extra two and a half million dollars. So that's really a cash, the, giving you the authority to spend your cash if you make that decision. We've not done it yet. We didn't do it in COVID, but that's the way the state's budget program works. That's similar with the cemetery fund. The cemetery came in and gave a presentation. They did not ask for an increase in their budget. However, there's more cash in the, in the cemetery fund, so we budget for you to be able to spend that money if you choose to. An example of that is we stepped in last year and helped them, uh, repave their road. And so the budget was in place for us to help them with that project. And so, and that cash, if it's not spent, will roll forward to the next year and be accounted for in the next budget. So
And that was a huge, not to interrupt you, but that was a huge thing for, if any of you have been out to the summer cemetery or been to a funeral there, um, that was huge to have that paved out there, going from gravel to pavement. So that was a, that was a big thing to accomplish out there. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. On, on the transfers, um, the transfers have their own page and it's, and it's an in and an out. So it's not increasing the bottom line. But the point of a transfer is to pay an obligation, where it should be paid. So for example, we signed up for a new debt issuance this year or last year and we'll have a payment in '26. And so I move, I'm transferring money in the budget out of the general fund over to the debt fund to make that payment. We choose to transfer out of the sales tax fund for the city's special recreation fund. We choose to s- uh, transfer some money to do repairs to the swimming pool. It's meant to upkeep the pool. So we're doing bigger repairs and things like that. So we always look at the cash reserves. If they're in your, um, snapshot that you received, I am, we are spending cash for projects. And which is, was one of the goals as we set out, building reserves. It would be so the time would come, we didn't have to borrow money for everything we wanted to do. And we're accomplishing that. And so I'm not disagreeing with his comments. The, the community development, the police, that's employee related. The majority of their increases are about positions that were added, benefits, all those pieces that I, I talked about earlier in the expense part, that's what the increase was. So. And they are positions, um, that were created and added to the budget in consultation with those departments. So. Those were the comments, um, that I picked up from his statements. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Maybe just the way it's, it laid out on here. So I kind of have a question about that too. So is the 81,000 for like the cemetery fund, is that what's available to them to spend? Or is that actually new revenue that we're allocating to them? Uh, it's the 44 is being allocated to them, right?
Let me, it should be the 44. They do not get the, they don't get everything in that fund.
Yes, so they
They get what they ask for.
Okay.
And let me
They have a reserve
I was just saying, the 81 is like the reserve
It's like
Yes, they have a reserve.
I think, and their, their biggest cost is always mowing.
Yep.
Every year. It runs between 35 and 40 for them each year. Um, I also know that cemetery board is considering and acquired some bids to replace some of the fencing that they have out there that has
Rough shape.
Very deteriorated shape. So I know they're looking at that.
When you look at page 7B, which is the cemetery fund, the portion at the top, they're going to receive about 44,000, I'm sorry.
44, 780?
Yeah, 44, 780 is what they'll bill in taxes. And that is, um, but it, when you look at the expense part of it, the cemetery asked for 35,000, which we are committing on here to pay them. And then we've budgeted about 46,000 for projects undefined at this time. So if we can help with their fence or something like that, then the city would do that. They have some reserves of their own.
I also know the, the fence issue came up after they gave their presentation to city council. So it was not on their radar when they came and spoke.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't remember.
And they were actually kind of hesitant to come back because they had already made that presentation and they didn't want to backtrack on what they had already presented.
Yeah. And I talked to him a little about it, a little bit about it. And I went out there personally and, and walked it and looked at it and it's
It's bad.
Yeah.
It's pretty
And I think they have a multi-year plan on, uh, originally, that's what I heard. If you look at page 14B in the first column, the cemetery has a reserve with the city of about 92,000 dollars in addition to the money in their, uh, levy fund. So we can, if you choose to do that, you could help with their fence or something.
So what's this 81, what's the 81 referencing then? Is that what's available to them if we decide to give it to them?
Yes.
Okay.
If you choose to spend, you have 81,000 budgeted to spend. 35 of it's committed to the cemetery board for their normal operating budget.
Oh, okay.
And then 46 is for, um, projects you could determine to give to them. But there's no project named, so we'd follow normal procedures for you to approve those.
So the, the 13 million he referenced, is that basically the cash we have on hand plus the budgetary expenses?
Yes.
So that's where that comes from. So it's not necessarily that we're spending that. It's that, that's what we have available for spending.
Right. And you're giving yourself the authority to spend it.
So the 3 million difference, does that come because we had a lot more revenue this year than we thought we were going to have? So we're going to have more reserves?
Yep.
Okay.
And actually, that's pretty similar to what we brought into '25.
Yeah.
We really budget for kind of a break even. And then through the year, when we get to here, we're budgeting a break even. We get to the end of the year, my calculations say we'll, we'll be in that, in our normal position, like with better revenue.
Yeah, really, the increase I see has about 300 and, 300,000 or so in the actual ad valorem increase.
That goes back to the presentation. I think it was about 308,000 or something like that.
Yeah, 308 is what I wrote down.
Mrs. Dunn, if, if we didn't budget some, or some or all of our reserves on the front end and needed that authority to spend later on during the year sometime, if an emergency or something happened, we would have to go through a budget amendment process.
Right.
All that, by doing it in advance before, at the beginning, essentially, that prevents us from needing to go through that, but also still gives us the availability to spend well below that and not spend our cash.
Yes.
And be okay.
Yes. It's kind of like the cap on the
Yep.
taxes. We don't, and we're not saying we're going to spend that, it just means if we need to, that's
Yeah. If you
Do you want to step up here to say it, just so everyone online can hear you, Mr. Aravalo?
My, my issue basically, and, and, and I agree with a lot of what, uh, Rhonda says, but in '24, you had 2 million dollars in reserve or, uh, unexpend- unencumbered. This year, you have 2,300,000. The projection for '26 is 2,400,000, give or take a couple of thousand dollars. My, and I guess my question is, rather than have that much in unencumbered, why don't you lower the rate, the mill levy to the citizens? And have less of a, of an unencumbered amount? I mean, it's, you'd make a lot of headway that way, gentlemen and lady. You know, uh, and you already know you're going to have it because it keeps growing. You know, so
Dangerous to
If, if, if a mill levy is about, I forget, about a hundred
200,000.
200,000 dollars. You take 200,000 off that 2.379 million that you're going to have in reserve at the end of next year. It's a mill, you don't have to charge the citizens.
And I think that's what we did last year with some of the projects. We decided to use some of the cash to offset some of the mills.
Yeah, we used some of our reserves and paid cash for several things over the last year, year and a half.
Yep. True.
And to be clear, I think, I think most of us are in support of what he's saying as far as trying to get these savings to, uh, the city as a whole. But we have a lot of infrastructure needs that we have to move forward. We have lots of people that need sidewalks in their neighborhoods. We have, we're trying to repave large portions of the city. That's a significantly higher
And we're trying to do asphalt instead of chip and seal on most of the roads.
That, that difference is a very high dollar amount. So we're trying to do what's right, both by the constituents on the tax end of things while still simultaneously providing everybody with the services that they're asking for. So it's a matter of just come, trying to do our best to come at it and bring it down where we can and spend it responsibly. And I think having a reserve at the end of every year kind of shows that we're spending responsibly and we're being smart about where those dollars are going. Because this, uh, this unprecedented growth that we're experiencing right now is not going to last forever at some point. The housing market is not going to be great. Um, we're not going to see, um, that as many houses built in a year. And, and that will make it hard to, to be fair to the citizens to provide the services we need. So we've got to be responsible about it.
But I think part of what he's saying though, is the encumbered amount keeps going up every year.
Right.
Yeah.
And so that's what his question is. So
Well, I mean, I
I mean, I don't know if you
What would you think would be ideally, um, something that sits in reserve?
Actually, if I could
Yeah.
Uh, I also would say, if we didn't have that money in reserves, our bond rating wouldn't be what it is. And we would be spending probably that much or more on
Right.
On fees for having a lower bond rating.
So the government finance officer, the national organization that lead, guides every government finance group, their minimum threshold is about 25%. So when you have a 10 million dollar annual operating budget in the general fund, you want about 2.5 million in your reserve. And we have been striving to have more than that because of our growth and because of all the projects that we have going on. In addition to that, we have, um, we would want to be very careful of dropping below or down to 25% because as they're watching our bond rating as we do, you know, other things here tonight, it will impact us negatively, which means you pay a higher interest rate. So I think it is, I think we're doing a good job that you all are picking projects and paying cash and managing the cash appropriately. And we, and you've, I, I'm on the side of the fence to say, don't spend, don't spend. I'm one side of the fence to say, don't spend, don't spend, and I know you all, we butt heads about that. And we come to, I think, good solutions on things like that. And I really respect what he's saying as well, that. You, we don't want the biggest coffer in all of Johnson County or Miami County, however, we want to protect. The assets of the city in every way that we can um appropriately.
Yeah, I think it's a fine balance. I think, you know, anytime we can lower the mill levy and benefit the citizens, obviously all of us want to do that. But we've also got, like you say, we've gotta keep that money in reserves, we gotta keep that bond rating well, so those interest payments aren't high, so when we are doing. You know, putting a ton of asphalt down, doing a lot of infrastructure, we're paying a lot less money on that overall multimillion dollar project. Versus if we had a lower bond rating, we'd be paying a lot more money for. It's fine balance for sure.
And playing devil's advocate, I I again, I am of the mind that the lower we can get the mill levy. As quickly as possible is always a good thing.
Absolutely.
But we just have to be as realistic and and be, try to work both sides of the fence as much as we can to make sure that we're doing what we need to do.
Yeah. You wanna step up here and state your name and address? Yeah, yeah, just come on up, just name an address if you can.
My name's Dan Broyles, address two eleven twenty-seven West one eighty-six Terrace, Spring Hill. Uh I didn't plan on coming up, but uh I was just looking at some numbers and I thought, you know, we're looking at the the the. The revenue neutral rate was like twenty, the mill level is about twenty, and the current proposed is about twenty-two, it's about ten percent higher, right? Um I was just thinking, you know, if you do that year over year, you're, that that growth becomes a little excessive. Now, now while you're growing, I understand ten percent here, ten percent another year, but at at a certain point, you've got enough that you're you're always accounting for. Lots of projects, and at some point you need to throttle throttle that increase closer to maybe the uh inflationary rate, you know, three percent. Five percent, not ten percent, so I don't know how, what what the rate's been over the last several years. But you know, even five years at at ten percent is a really hefty increase. So um I just, I just thought that might encourage you to to look for maybe a rate that was maybe five percent over instead of ten. Right, just a thought.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
And that was kinda what I was getting at, he kinda said it better than I did probably, where I'd like to see it be a more reasonable percentage. For the current residents. I know we're always gonna add more, so take that into account, figure out what is gonna be different for. The current residents and then kinda backtrack from there, so.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that I kinda held on that Mr. Rudolph said was um about not having the data or whatever, so can you just. Explain what is, he he said something about, correct me if I'm wrong.
He didn't have all the details, yeah.
Yeah, so what what do the citizens, what do we have that the citizens don't, I mean. In terms of things to look at, I just, if there's a feeling that things aren't transparent or out in the open, I have issues with that, so. Can you tell me what they would have access to or whatever?
I am not aware, we had a, we had um. Work sessions in May-June timeframe and where you got details by department. Whereas in this, you have a summary by department, not, where you have like three, I think three lines depending on the department. Which is the big categories, so they could look at. Administrative supplies and and commercial insurance line by line, and that you can also look at that in the um. Snapshot, which is available, we just finished this one today, so it's not on the line yet, but. Um those are available online as well, so I'm not aware of things that we don't have, maybe they're not. In the, you know, involved in the details as much to know.
Right.
Some of the details, but I don't believe we're providing things we don't give to the public.
So just to be clear, everything that we discuss in any public hearing, any presentation that you provide us, goes directly on the city's website for anybody.
I'm not sure presentations make it there, but it doesn't mean they can.
But reports specifically.
Right, right.
Reports do, and then of course.
Presentations would be a great idea, but as long as the information's there, it's important.
And of course, you can watch the meeting on YouTube and you can go back and watch meetings about as far as you wanna go back on, back on YouTube and watch them.
I guess this will be my last comment. I I don't, I don't expect to be revenue neutral, I don't think that's probably realistic for a growing city like ours. One thing I'd like to see is we look at some of the some of the expense increases we have and maybe split it between taking some from cash. And some from maybe one of the positions that were actually, like I said, I was under the impression we're gonna try and stay one police officer a year, so. Maybe you guys figure out on your end, I would like to remove one position and take a little bit of cash and try to get it down that one mill. From what was what's been presented here, but that's just where I'm at, so.
I'm fine with, I'll echo that, I'm fine with taking some out of the reserves as long as it. And I think we'd have to get with our bond raider to make sure, I'm fine taking it down as far as we can without affecting the bond rating. I think if it starts dipping to where our bond rating goes down, I don't think that's a benefit.
What's our total, what's our total cash? I know general we're two point four or whatnot, but what's it? What's that when you, when you take the healthcare, all that stuff in there? We're at like four or five, aren't we? Three or four?
Well, right now we have bond money sitting in there and you have about eight million dollars in in your sewer fund. About one point seven million in your water fund, so in total we have quite a bit of cash right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm talking more general, so I would consider healthcare general and then just regular.
Right. I've never looked at it that that way, so I'd have to look at it. It's also in your snapshot.
I was gonna say, I I, from my understanding, it's like four and a half million, so to me that keeps us still, we take a hundred grand out. Lose a hundred on maybe kinda the increases, that's a whole mill right there like we talked about, so. To me, that's, I'd like to see something like that when we come back for the actual budget side to to see where we go with it, but.
What's the exact amount per mill?
Uh, two hundred and eight thousand, I think.
Yeah, try it two hundred.
And the the reserve accounts that you just mentioned for the utilities, those can only be spent on utility things.
Correct.
They cannot be transferred over to general fund, it is utility specific.
Well, water, I think we're gonna do something.
There are ways to transfer it legally, however, it's an ongoing operation, right? The other thing I'll remind everybody of is those funds are not supported by tax dollars, they are supported by. The operation that they are.
Yeah, the way I think about it is is kinda three totally different entities, it's not, it's not one.
We have different revenue streams.
We got wastewater, we have water.
Services.
Sales.
Water's going away, so that's gonna be, you know, what, we're kinda going down to two real revenue streams, then. One of them has a lot more buckets we put into and one just kinda has a single bucket we work with, so. Um so for me, yeah, that's what I was looking at as far as cash reserves is more just that general, and like I said, I know we separate out the healthcare, so. I know it's still part of general, but it's separated out as a fund, so.
There's different police funds and sales tax funds and excise tax funds and. And I'm careful not to lump some things together because they can only be spent on specific purposes.
Well, I'm just talking about for the bond rating purpose to stay above the twenty-five, I mean, we're kinda at like thirty or forty percent from what I understand.
Yes, that's what we've been targeting.
So a hundred grand is not gonna be a killer towards that.
It's fifty percent.
Our current policy is fifty percent, so we need to change that.
Yes.
And I I know we've talked about that, I don't remember ever voting on that to say, hey, we wanna have a policy at this one, but I know we talked about wanting to get to fifty percent. But I I haven't really been on the side of that, as you probably remember me arguing it, so.
The, that's one of the positives actually is in our bond rating when I have the call with them, is that. We are exceeding the minimum, that we're not operating at the minimum, that you know, we're not living paycheck to paycheck or anything, and so. Um, one, they don't require that our policy say exact exactly the number as as opposed to. Here's our policy and we're striving to be higher than that, it's acceptable to a bond rating.
Okay, so yeah, that's where, when I talk about pulling a little bit of money, I I wouldn't expect to do all of it to get us down to revenue neutral, but.
Some of it.
To say, hey, if we can save a mill because we're taking a little bit of cash, we're doing this, and it may not happen every year, but. Like you said, we've had kind of really big increases the last couple of years, maybe this year we try to do something like that to help offset.
I'm okay with that, and then also um when you're talking about positions, I just wanna know what the impact of that's gonna be.
The impact.
Of if we start reducing positions.
The police department or whoever else.
Yeah, I really wanna know what that's gonna.
Or reducing an increase, but.
Well, no, I'm talking about if you take a position off of.
Well, that's that's just an increase to positions, that's what I'm saying, reduce the increase.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna know what the impact of that's gonna be, that's gonna carry.
Absolutely, and I'll tell you that the positions that we're adding, it's a workload thing. Not in the police department, they do a great job of explaining the with data, why they need the positions and we're growing and where we're growing and. And those things. When it comes to the positions like in community development, even though that's not my department, community development, there's a tremendous workload in there. And as we're, the more houses we build or a commercial project or something like that, we don't have the manpower to do that. And so we staff some of that out. Um I know with engineering, we've been creative, we we brought on an engineering inspector. That generates some revenue, and so it's a, you know, a benefit um both ways, but it is a workload. At some point, we can't ask people to do more, we'll have to outsource that work to be done.
Yeah.
We won't be outsourcing police, obviously, or something like that, but.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, just on the on the police officer position personally, um having come from eight years working at Johnson County Sheriff's Office, I understand how important it is to have. Uh some kind of a relief factor built into your schedule. Um people's lives are messy always, there's always a kid that's sick. There's a vacation that has to be taken, bereavement leave that has to be taken. We've got lots of things going on in the metro right now that show exactly how quickly. Things can change and needs change across the agency, so as far as I'm concerned, I think two officers is the minimum that we need. Make sure they've got the operational staffing that they need.
And it's not something new they've been asking, they've been asking for for a while for more officers, not a new thing, and I I think the last thing we want. In public safety is our officers to get burnt out.
Absolutely.
So because their workload is too heavy, so no, we don't want that with any employees, but. The last thing I think we want is with people that are protecting our lives out there, so I'm I'm with you on that, I don't, I don't. In my opinion, I don't think we should cut positions in the police department.
I think two is appropriate.
Any other public comments? Or comments up here?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, we'll move on to consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments on that. Now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal counsel action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash eighteen. A resolution to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
I think I might know the answer before I get up here. I'll come up anyway. Um, based on the public hearing that we had, you can approve a resolution voting to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Um, I have presented, provided the revenue neutral rate to you or the resolution to you. It does not in its state. The mill levy, it just says our rate is twenty point seven four seven for revenue neutral. And the city intends to exceed it. The, we're at a point where we cannot exceed the twenty-two point six nine number that we published in the paper, which I think we're all good with that. Um, but I believe that with the revenue neutral process, this is a bit of a security blanket. You can, you can choose not to exceed revenue neutral or not go to twenty-two point six nine. But you really want this resolution in place because if you don't vote and for the resolution and have it in place. And then for some reason we end up above revenue neutral, we have to refund money to every single person that we collected it from. And we have to pay for that entire process. So this to me is a security blanket, how we choose to use it is up to you. On when you actually approve a budget and and what the, set the budget for the mill levy.
So we've already set the um the cap, we haven't, this doesn't, this isn't setting the cap, this is just saying revenue neutral.
That we're going to exceed it, we could exceed it.
Okay.
And what's the timeline before we're required to actually submit this paperwork?
Before you approve the budget. You cannot, and the, like August twentieth is the first time you could consider it, and so I always build slip in this. Um schedule in the event you want to wait until next time, we can do that, but we would. Uh consider this again before we would consider approving a budget on September eleventh, if we wanted to.
I don't think I'd ever um stick us to having this stated uh revenue neutral only because of the penalties that could be. That could happen, but again, I'm I'm still gonna hold strong on lowering it by the one mill at least on the on the cap that you've got there, so. Just as FYI.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash eighteen, authorizing the city of Spring Hill, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second, got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Mayor, that needs to be a roll call vote, perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Deputy Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
Ms. Feback?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, the resolution passes six zero zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash whatever that last number is.
R ten nineteen.
Nineteen, uh resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately eighteen million, five hundred thousand dollars principal amount of general obligation temporary notes. Series twenty twenty-five C of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, and Mrs. Dunn, you still have the floor.
I think what you read was about twenty twenty-five C, and the first resolution which has to be approved first or has to be considered first. Is about approving the two projects um for construction of the Northwest Sanitary Sewer and the Webster Street Sewer improvements.
The paper doesn't match.
Sorry, it doesn't match on on here.
It's not twenty twenty-five R dash nineteen?
It is.
It should be.
Okay, maybe I, maybe I wasn't listening good.
Okay, yeah, it should be.
Is in the next.
That's the next one, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I think you jumped, yeah, when you were.
Yeah, sorry guys.
This is a two-step process, the first one is to approve the projects themselves, to say the city is uh committing, moving forward on two projects. And then we'll come in the next step and talk about um issuing bonds to pay for those two projects. Um, I do have our bond attorneys uh here with us tonight, I'm gonna do my best shot at this, and then I have the experts who'll come up if we need something else. I believe you have a map for this project. Um, the first one. Um, there are two projects um involved in this bond issue, and the first one is the Northwest Sanitary Sewer. Which is um from one hundred and seventy-fifth to one hundred and ninety-ninth street. Um, connecting our sewer and adding additional um. Availability along that route, I wanna make sure I'm doing that, is that correct, okay? Um, the second part of this project is a little bit newer to us. Um, you recently annexed in property north of the Cardinal Glass Plant, and now we wanna work to get sewer to that project. Which we're calling the Webster Street Sewer Extension, and it would connect that property as well as. Property on the west side of Webster Street in that same general area, so these are two expansions to our. Uh sewer network that we would be authorizing projects for.
Sorry, our sheets don't match the screen, so we're trying.
Okay.
That's why I was off on that one, so I apologize, we're.
I can bring you mine if you want me to.
So we're making sure we're on the right one, so we're on number eight.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Um, we did uh provide a map here as well for the extension so that you can see uh how they'll cross the city. We've opted to go for a project that will bring in a number of pieces of property. Um, you know some of the development in that area as well as um some opportunities uh in the future while we're. We're saving some money by spending this money instead of doing it piecemeal. Um, we'll add more now to save us some millions in the future, a couple million in the future. We'll also be abandoning um a lift station, creating a new one, rerouting a little bit uh to improve. Our distribution, our collection system. Can I or any of the experts in the room answer questions for you?
Well, and this piggybacks a little bit off of what we did last meeting, right?
Yes, it does.
Wastewater, so for those who don't know, we took over. All of Huntington Creek and some of uh that south portion there where the blue line kicks off to the right.
Yeah.
So how much of that is gonna help pay for this? I know that some of that hookup's gonna be, at least help with the the debt service on it.
I think it's about two hundred thousand a year, something like that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Two hundred and six, something like that.
The Johnson County wastewater has um agreed to giving the city two million dollars to help with construction of this project. And we're estimating around two hundred thousand dollars a year of additional revenue. Uh, this this project is probably about a twenty-four month project between design.
Uh, this, this project is probably about a twenty-four month project between design, acquisition of easements, and then construction.
And does this, you said this includes the um, the Webster side also?
Correct.
Is that a different slide to show?
I don't know that there's a slide on.
We don't have a picture of it.
There's a Y there that kinda shows you where.
No, the Webster Street would be down closer.
Talking about the glass plant.
Glass plant.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it.
So is that still gonna be the kick through to kinda go to like the west of Sonic?
Yes, north.
Yes.
Northwest of Sonic.
North of Sonic, but um going west towards one sixty-nine that way.
Okay, so this is all encompassing between the two?
Correct.
We can finance together.
I, I believe the Webster portion of it's around six point five or six point eight million.
That's correct.
Uh, estimate.
And then um, I guess probably the bond counsel can respond better to this, but. For the first couple of years, I know we're in temporary financing and then we go further, what's, I'm assuming is it like interest only in the temporary note?
Yes.
Portion, so will that help, will that new money we bring in as far as revenue from that area is that can help cover that short term? Can't imagine eighteen million, two hundred grand a year's gonna cover it, but.
I don't know that it'll timeout.
Where kinda payments will be at or stuff like, or when do we take over that billing?
We'll, we'll probably take over that billing at the end of construction, so it'll be about two.
Okay, so we don't actually change over the billing until the end of construction?
Not until the construction's completed, uh currently, they have two different lift stations that J C W has. Um, and those will be replaced with this gravity line down to a new lift station that'll pump over to our system.
And this was something we worked with J C W quite a bit on, or for probably six to eight months on process, so it was a good. A good deal for both of us, and yeah, we were excited to take all that into the city, and even though out of hand, still technically Latham will be servicing all of them, so.
Well, and that's what's nice about this is it gives us the ability to have development there, I know the Webster side is kind of exciting, cuz. We have a lot of stuff that's plotted over there, but there's actually no sewer to it, so this is gonna open up.
Right.
When somebody is ready to develop it, that it's gonna be kind of a, you know, we can move quickly rather than have to go through this again, so. It's kinda nice to it all at once, yeah, it gives us both, yeah, really the one hundred and ninety-ninth kind of area. Both sides of the highway is gonna be nice and accessible now, so, okay. I was just trying to make sure it all wrapped together.
It does. Times together.
And right now, as far as, I know we talked about this, but financing wise. This is not gonna cause a rate increase to the, to the wastewater users right now.
We have, we budgeted normal increases um over the next years, and the numbers that you've heard about, you know. Two hundred and six thousand and things like that, doesn't include any development that might happen along Webster Street or development outside of the one that came from J C W. So hopefully we'll see more development to go with it and help.
And what's nice about wastewater is there's connection fees, so as these places are developed, we'll get connection, like large chunks of connection fee and. Maybe be able to knock this down a little bit quicker.
Yeah, it pays, eventually pays for itself.
Yeah.
It does.
All right.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any, I guess no questions, but the um, it's four hundred and sixty homes, I just found that kinda interesting. That's what you had told me on the.
Oh, that we picked up, yeah.
Oh, I think there's somebody.
Yeah, if you could come up just so the public can hear you, and if you just state your name and address.
Derek Buckridge, two zero four five six, West two hundred and twenty-third terrace. This looks like a pretty great easement going to a lot of neighborhoods. I don't know kinda the disruption that's gonna kinda go through there, it'd be a really good opportunity for some trail connectivity. Coming from one hundred and seventy-fifth, that gets trail connectivity out south, working across, across to one hundred and ninety-first, something to think about. Kinda planning for the future on some of these bigger projects as we kinda make those connections north to south, so.
That's something we're trying to plug to every developer when we're, when we're doing these subdivisions now, is we're trying to get a trail through every development that goes in, so that's kinda.
Well, and really, to be quite honest on this, that's a good idea. Is there, maybe Allison can answer this, but is there an option when they're kinda reef, like filling it back in? To just go ahead and pave over the top or put some sort of trail in, at least in the meantime?
Yeah, we should be able to do something like that, um, whenever we get that easement, we can do it as a trail slash.
Yeah.
So even kinda temporary, you could do this, just basically a limestone shavings base, you could do A V three limestone shavings. You're basically laying out a base, that's kinda phase one, a year later, the funding's there, then you go back and roll asphalt over it.
Well, and that's where maybe we need to get Derek with Allison and kinda talk more about that, cuz that would be a, I know we've talked about different things like.
The bigger issue is, are these properties are not in the city, um, and some of these go through people's yards, uh, so. Until they're developed out, it's gonna be difficult to um.
When we get it, is it just temporary easements that we get, we don't get permanent?
Well, there'll be a temporary construction easement and a permanent uh utility easement.
So we can't force, or we can't put a trail if it's just a utility?
Not if it's a utility easement, but if we were able to strike a deal with them, uh, then that would be a possibility, but. Most of these properties um are currently in the county. And there are a couple, th- there, there's probably two or three properties that it would go through somebody's yard. Um, but yes, definitely when we talk to developers, we try to get connectivity for the trail system.
I still think it's something we probably could look at, maybe even working with Johnson County since it is county right now to say, hey. Can we work with these landowners to see if there's something we can do? Cuz maybe it might, might not be ours, but maybe the county will chip in or help us do it, work with them at least, so something to think about, I like that idea.
Yeah, at lea- at least talk to the homeowners, landowners about it and maybe talk to the county.
Maybe, uh, maybe sometimes we're not directly over the, the sewer line, but we're, we jig off is what they allow us to do, so.
Well, cuz they have a trail going through that neighborhood anyway, don't they?
Well, Ninington Creek does, but I'm, he's talking more just directly down to get all the way down to one hundred and ninety-nine, so. Yeah. So, yeah, no, I think that's a good idea too, so it might be something to look into more.
Any other questions or comments? And just, I'm gonna go ahead and read this one again since we were off on the sheet on the screen, so before you, before you say the motion. It's a resolution authorizing the construction of Northwest Sanitary Sewer Improvements and the Webster Street Sewer Improvements and authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof.
The east side, though, we're hundred, that's pretty much all city except for kind of the north side, right, of uh, two hundred and seventh?
Um, yes, we just annexed that.
I said, we just annexed.
Even on the west side of Webster?
No, uh, there, there's part of that on the west side of Webster that's, that's in the city, and then there's a, a significant chunk that's still in the county.
So even if we maybe work on that area, that might be a good start to say, hey, we have.
Preb parks in and then everything south is not. Right.
Yeah.
Basically, in between preb and Sonic, most of that is.
So even if we can work something out, maybe even there to say, hey, this is a start to it, or get that, use that area to get back down into town or something, so. I would say it's just something to look at.
No, definitely, we, we definitely have those discussions with developers, uh, because of the park fees that are required. Uh, if, if we would have to purchase those properties, the, the easements or the permanent easement. Uh, through that area or the right of way, whatever we'd call it, uh, but we will definitely have those conversations.
Okay, well, I'm even talking, cuz there's gonna be areas that aren't gonna be developed anytime soon. So maybe we can work with the current owners to say, hey, we'll buy this easement to put a temporary trail in until it gets developed. So, yeah, I like that idea too, so I think we probably should look at more into that.
All right, if there are no more questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city of Spring Hill, Kansas to construct. Certain sanitary sewer line improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds.
Stop you, this is the wrong.
I'm on the wrong one, so this is.
Use the one that's print on, on your screen, I guess.
I'm on the screen.
That was the screen.
Yeah. Well, this is the F one.
This is.
So nine is the next one, this is eight. Nine has the dollar amount in it, but eight's pretty close to it.
Not in the motion.
Not in the motion.
Here, I'm gonna bring you the motion, I may?
This one here.
Yeah.
That's the next one. I got nineteen on there too. Yeah, that's exactly what I was reading.
It is?
We're on number eight, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll stay out of it this time. It's important that we do the projects before you do the bonds.
Yeah, so this one's the, yeah, just the project. Uh, let me start over. Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city of Spring Hill, Kansas. To construct certain sanitary sewer line improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the. Of the city to pay the cost thereof, all pursuant to K S A twelve dash six seventeen and twelve dash six eighteen.
I second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? If not, Deputy Madam Clerk, please take a roll, does this one a roll too, no, this one, this resolution's not. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. All right, we'll see if we can get this back on track, next item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty. A resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately eighteen million five hundred thousand dollars in principal amount of general obligation temporary notes. Series twenty twenty-five C of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas, and Mrs. Dunn, you have the floor.
This is step two of the two projects that you just authorized, is issuing the temporary notes to fund those two projects. Um, it's about six point four million plus financing and things like that. Um, for the Webster Street part and about uh eleven and a half million, I think, for the um Northwest Sewer. And plus financing and things like that, so it's eighteen point five million. To, for these two projects.
Any other questions or comments on that one?
No, so dollar amount just includes kinda everything, right, for those particular projects, engineering, everything.
Anything to add from the bond counsel?
I, I think you got the expert in the.
I wanna give you the opportunity.
He's trained well, and I've shown it tonight.
So the, the temp notes are two years from when we actually get them, right?
Yes, we could renew them if we needed to, but we have never done.
Cuz I was gonna say, if it only takes, if it takes a full twenty-four months to do the construction, we don't wanna be stuck with having not new people, or not have the new. You know, payments coming in and things like that, so that'd be my only concern, I, but if we can do an extension or.
We, we can't do that, yes.
Up to two more years or how long?
Um, I think you can do it up to two more years after that.
Up to four, okay, you just have to renew it too? All right. That would be my concern if the, if you think it's gonna take a full twenty-four, cuz when are we gonna start on this as far as?
We hired the engineering company.
So we're kinda full throttle on and on?
Yeah.
They're starting the design, um, they're starting that process probably here in the next fifteen to thirty days for, for.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Excuse me, if not, I entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately. Eighteen point five million principal amount of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty twenty-five C of the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
Next item on, thank you, next item on the agenda is consider approval of agreement with Johnson County for the project financial assistance for one hundred and ninety-ninth Street improvements. Ridgeview to Ren- Runner Road uh project, and Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Okay, the next item before you is request to approve an agreement with Johnson County. Uh, we are finishing up the design or getting ready to bid, one hundred and ninety-ninth Street finally, from Ridgeview to Runner. Uh, we have just a couple more properties that we're working on easements, those are going very, very well, so hopefully we'll have those here in the next few weeks. We are planning on um taking this out to bid here in the next couple of weeks with the bid opening scheduled in mid-October. Uh, so we have um issued a save the date, so to speak, for um to let bidders know. That this is happening just so that we can get some excitement and engagements early on. That's what we did with some other projects and it worked out really well, so. Um, so moving on to uh the improvements, going from the um. New alignment from Ridgeview to Runner, there is some coordination that we need to do with existing. Uh, features on Runner, uh, we've got the area to the east of Runner that is going to be under construction. With a county project here in the next three years, depending on funding. Not sure exactly how that's gonna happen, but there, that is currently under design right now, and then they're gonna shelve that until they have the funding available. Our engineers have been working with their engineers to try to marry the two designs together. So that our improvements as they go in now will work out really well with the existing pavement as it is today. And then also with the future pavement as Johnson County is designing it right now. So this agreement in front of you is kind of a collaboration with. We needed to put in some additional pavement now with our project in order to marry those two, three designs together. Um, so we've been working with the Johnson County Public Work Staff to figure out, you know, we shouldn't have to bear the whole burden. Of that additional work since, you know, we're kinda doing some work ahead um for their project. So we've been kinda working with the two engineering teams to figure out what is a. Fair and equitable approach moving forward so that Johnson County can um go ahead and give us some funding. To put in the asphalt that will support their project in the future, so um the graphic in front of you um shows. What that looks like, so we've got the initial layout for our design that goes to Runner. Uh, then we've got the Johnson County layout for existing Runner and then the increase. So that amount of increase, again, we got all the engineers together, we figured out what fair compensation would be. And we put a little bit of increase in there because of some of these features, we're gonna have additional driveways. Maybe some additional grading, that kinda thing, so we figured out what a fair amount would be and a good estimate. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was a good estimate for us to go from um moving forward. So we went ahead and set the, in the agreement, a not to exceed amount. Because everybody feels more comfortable having a cap, so um, and Johnson County, uh Board of County Commissioners. They uh reviewed this in their agenda review a few weeks ago, last Thursday, they approved the agreement with us. So the, to kinda close the loop, we're coming before you now for approval with this agreement. Just so that we can get compensated for that additional asphalt that we need to. Make this project work, so um again, we're getting an additional hundred, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To help fund a portion of our project that we're building in advance to help out Johnson County. So that's basically what's in the agreements, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
I'd like to point out that Johnson County has worked very well with us over the last few years, and I think um we've worked really hard to build those relationships. Lane and I meet with them every single month, um, and so I think those. Those relationships that we've built over the last four years have really benefited us, especially when we start doing road projects and different projects throughout the city is there. We haven't had much a prob, excuse me, much of a problem getting things passed through their, their body when, when we need some help with something or a cars project or something, so. Sometimes you think those relationship building things don't mean anything, but after, we've, we've proved that it really does make a big difference when, when working on big projects and stuff.
And the agreement is that we pay for it initially and then we invoice them back and they pay us back?
Yeah, after it's constructed, uh, we will invoice them, so we'll front the money, which um that's the type, that's the agreement that we've got with a lot of other agencies. Um, I would like to point out, this is a cars-funded project too, so we will be getting additional funding through the cars program.
What, what is the total cost of this increase?
Uh, let's see, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we estimated. But we also put an additional seven percent in there, and then we um rounded it off just to have that cap.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're pretty much paying for.
They're covering for, covering everything.
Yeah, they're gonna give us.
Oh, okay, I thought there was like a portion we were paying.
No, it's um.
Yeah, we're just, okay, oh, okay, okay. I thought it was gonna be like double that and it was like, oh, we'll split it with you or something, okay, cool.
No, we're trying to figure out, that's what that chart on the um graphic that you can't see up there. Um, that whatever forty-four thousand, whatever uh square yards or uh, that's, that's where that calculation came from. So we tried to figure out what would be our portion, what would be their portion, and what that gap is, and then that hundred, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is what they would pay, I do, I would, would like to point out that the Public Work Staff is great to work with. You know, they're very responsive, they're um, they get it, they've been through some of the stuff. With the portion that we're doing um on the east side of Runner, we are working on trying to get some additional right of way. To kinda help fill some gaps too, so we've got one property to the east of Runner that we are acquiring some right of way to kinda. Square that off a little bit better too, and their staff is um readily available if we need any assistance with that.
And this is me not being able to read this kinda stuff very well, we're looking at the west side of Runner, correct?
This is actually the east side of Runner.
So we're actually going east?
We are, so our project, our project technically goes to Runner. And then everything from the east side of Runner is again trying to blend everything together.
Okay.
So to pair up the project, we, we had to go a little bit further to blend it. And then we were asked to go even further because of the Johnson County project. So it's just.
Further portion we're talking about.
Yeah.
What was the initial that we were gonna do?
Uh, whatever that graphic says. Amy, can you zoom in on that? That chart on there. Oh, you can't? Okay, my eyes are really bad.
Well, I guess just a.
Yeah, it's in the chart.
The initial says fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty.
Thank you, and that's in square feet.
Increase in area, I got forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine.
Well, I'm actually, I'm asking more just distant, like on the.
Oh, it's about fourteen hundred feet.
Fourteen hundred feet further.
From uh Renner to the end point that you see on there. So it's about fourteen hundred.
Okay, so just go to here.
It's gotta be about where that sewer.
Oh, yeah, it, the country, uh, country view.
Something, there's a chunk of the road they tore up for a while there.
It's right around there, yeah. Yeah, we're just transitioning into the existing pavement. For about fourteen hundred feet.
See my ignorance when it comes to this.
Sorry, I misunderstood the question.
No, I just couldn't, I didn't quite understand, but he made it clear. The dotted line is where we were gonna go. And.
Yes.
But we're going beyond the dotted line is, that's what I was looking for, but I didn't know how to ask it. Cool.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve an agreement Johnson Count, with Johnson County for the one hundred ninety-ninth street improvement from Ridgeview to Renner Road and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
A second. Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you very much. That ends formal council action at this time. Move on to announcements and reports. Um, I don't really have a lot of them to say. The last, the last first Friday is coming up here soon. So that's been, it's gotten bigger and bigger each month. Um, I've been out there every month and my family's really enjoyed it out there. This last month, there was a lot of people out there, so, uh, yeah.
No report?
Mr. Thon?
Um, I'm actually looking up a name. Um, we had Mr. Torres come in um a couple meetings ago about an asphalt issue and gravel issue. Um, have we been able to provide him with any uh corrective measures?
Yes, we have.
Yes. Awesome.
Okay, um, so I had a great discussion with Mr. Torres today. Uh, he mentioned that he has already done some work on putting the asphalt millings in and getting those compacted. He mentioned that he's going to um put in an emulsion solution. That is going to be a similar treatment to what we do in our chip seal.
Okay.
Uh, which will help bond that um, those millings into a hard, harder surface. So he's accomplishing uh basically having that asphalt surface, having that emol- emulsion solution in there. So he's gonna bind it all together. So um, based on that, we are okay with him moving forward. Um, so he, he's gonna uh start working on getting that, that done.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear we got resolution on it. As far as our current ordinances are written. Um, is there something that we can do to address the way those are written? If this solution is a solution that's an acceptable alternative to how it's written now? Is that something we can bring up as a discussion item so we can kind of get the particulars on it?
I think the way it's written is um that concrete or asphalt is um a solution.
Right.
Um, because we use chip seal as one of our maintenance alternatives and if it's good enough for us.
Right.
I feel like it's good enough for them and then there's also something in our ordinance that gives the city engineer the ability to um. Make approvals as they see fit. So I don't think there's any changes that are necessary because they still meet the intent of the ordinance.
Okay.
Providing this as an asphalt, an acceptable asphalt alternative.
Alright, so I love the sound of that alternative as long as we're applying. I think that's a fantastic.
Yeah, if you would have just put in the asphalt millings, it would be, you know, something that would wash away and it would be a maintenance nightmare. Um, he, the other part of the approval is that he install it per the manufacturer's. Uh, recommendations for the amount, the gallons per square foot that he needs to put with that. And then we also talked about some of the sweeping and some of the other things that he would need to do as he's installing this.
Thank you for that. That's awesome.
And we'll keep an eye on this just to make sure. And I, I tried to tell him that maybe he needs to go a little bit above and beyond. Just because, you know, this is gonna be a long-term maintenance thing and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I feel more comfortable with um the path that he's moving forward with.
Thank you guys for working with him.
And, and as always, we try to, you know, we've got to stick to certain rules, but we do try to be accommodating and try to do as much as we can with sticking it. Within those ordinances and rules. So that was an example. So thank you very much for working. Uh, Mr. Peel?
No report.
Mrs. Feedback?
Um, do you have a report on one hundred ninety-first signalization?
Let's hear. I, I will take care of this.
Okay.
She's looking right at me when I start to put my head down. I was waiting, I have it on my list too, by the way. I got you.
Okay.
Okay, um, so we are finalizing the final plans. Um, those either have, those have been um initially submitted. To KDOT. They had some uh review comments and such, so we have addressed those and those are ready to be resubmitted to KDOT. For their final review and approval. So we are so close. So hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that one out to bid as well.
And we've already got engineering on board and everything like that. So we're ready.
Engineering.
Ready to fire on all cylinders as soon as we get them to stamp it.
And the beautiful thing is we didn't have to acquire any right of way or easements. Everything is within the KDOT right of way. Uh, there aren't very many utilities, if any, that need to be relocated. I think there might be a power hole that might need to be relocated. But everything else is right there, ready to go. And we did submit um the, based on the final uh engineering. The final cost estimates and everything, we got the final paperwork into KDOT for the request to get two million dollars. To help cover uh the amount. Was that what you were gonna say?
I was.
The, the, the other better part of that is that uh KDOT agreed to allow us to move forward with the project this year instead of in. Uh, next July, so.
And they'll let us have the two million dollars instead of hold it out.
Correct. That, um, that's a reimbursable.
Yeah, it would be reimbursable. So about the timing that the funding would be ready to go uh for us to get, we will be completed with the project. And it would be a reimbursable expense. So um, everything's kind of lining up with this project.
Been four years in the making, but we're getting there.
We're getting there. It's going out to bid here soon.
Okay, and just to give you, to give some people a little context, I, I saw a really bad car accident there. I think it was, well, they've had quite a few. But I, I particularly went by one and the car was turned over on its top. So I just, I don't know, I just am very passionate about this moving along. So, okay.
There's been, there's been a lot.
I know, I know, there has been. Um, do you have an update on the meeting that you were supposed to have or, I don't know if it occurred yet? With the business people for two twenty-third?
Yes.
There was that intersection issue and what we were gonna do with roundabout or no roundabout, whatever. Can you just clarify where your meetings got with the businesses?
Where we're at?
Yes, please.
So uh, we had a meeting a few weeks ago with KDOT staff um to review, we had an alternative based on the discussion that we had here. Uh, so we had our engineers prepare yet another alternative that showed more of a roundabout presence. Right there at Harrison. Um, so we presented that to KDOT. KDOT actually had, they were open to that.
Oh.
Um, that design. They actually had a uh, some really good modifications. So we're currently uh getting with our engineers to incorporate those modifications into the pretty pictures. In the rendering so that we can um show those in our public engagement. I have asked um HDR, since they did such a great job with SS4A, to help us. Help with the support of our public engagement with this to help come up with some of the collateral materials to help um promote. The public meeting. I'm looking at doing something around probably the week of um September twenty-ninth. To give us some time to promote the meeting and get that collateral out to the businesses with those little take a sheet, um, tear sheet. So that everybody knows what's going on. We can get the emails out to the business owners list. And um update our website so that we can get some graphics out there. So people have time to digest what we're seeing. Um, for our new recommended um alignment. But KDOT was very much in favor of doing something in there. And they were very open to the design that we had with modifications. The roundabout itself. Because it was so close to one sixty-nine, we would have to close off the ramps. Um, and, and yeah, so that was one of the considerations. So one of the modifications was to uh allow some openings. There so that we could get full access at the ramps and still keep the roundabout. So I will hopefully have that. Uh, rendering next week so that I can share that with you guys, get it out on our website. Um, come up with some of those collaterals, get the meetings set. I'm thinking Monday, the twenty-ninth would be um a good night. Unless you guys don't like Monday nights. So anyway, so we'll get more information out to you.
Okay, and then lastly, I promised last question, comprehensive plan. Lastly, I heard it was the Planning Commission. We had all the surveys, we had all the meetings for years and years. I'm just trying to figure out where we're at with it.
We're actually going to have a work session next Thursday before the Planning Commission regular meeting to start kind of picking it back up. Uh, where we left off.
And where was that?
Um.
I can't remember.
Like the future land use area as well as some of the industrial zoning and where that's gonna go. Potentially adding that M-two zone.
Okay, I appreciate that update. I'm just trying, there's some things that I'm just trying to make sure where we're at. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, everybody, for your answers.
Thank you. I did have a couple of things that I forgot. Um, I did have a couple of citizens reach out to me. One of them about the taxes. So thank you to the lady that called and left me a voicemail about tonight's meeting. I did listen to your whole voicemail and take that into consideration. And then also we had someone reach out about um crosswalks at Dayton Creek Elementary. And we did have, they, they did have a meeting about that and it sounded like it was a very productive meeting. Um, so we do have some ideas and some things that we want to try to accomplish over there to make it safer for the kids to get through that community over, over to the school there. Um, so um, we've met with all, all the different partners on, on that. And so as we get some more details on that, we'll, we'll let that be public. But right now, they're still kind of doing some plans on that to try to figure out what we can do over there. So thank you for the citizens that reached out about it.
We've been meeting with the school district to kind of get a better idea of some of the flows around the school. Um, we've pulled up preliminary and final plats to figure out, you know, what's this area gonna be when it grows up? And then, yes, we had a traffic safety committee meeting this week to go over um all the, the ideas and everything. So we do have some recommendations moving forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Grant?
No report.
Mr. Massey?
I think everything was covered.
All right. Mr. Lau?
No report.
Captain Khan? Mrs. Abel?
I got more. I think we covered a lot of this already, but I did want to let you know that um we interviewed um three teams this week on Monday. Um, for the wastewater treatment facility. Um, we are going to be doing a massive um facility. Uh, south of our existing facility and uh we are choosing to do progressive design build. In order to do that process um to help expedite the timeframe and stay within a certain prescribed budget. That is the best um project alternative for us moving forward. So we interviewed um three teams and will be before you um on September eleventh. With a um bid acceptance and a recommendation to move forward. So um, and then the contract itself will be at a later meeting. So we're um slowly making progress to get this done. But this is massive project. It's gonna be one of the largest projects I'll ever work on in my career. Um, so we want to make sure that we take the necessary steps. So that will be forthcoming.
And it will be one of the larger waste facilities and wastewater facilities in the state of Kansas. So it'll be, it will be a pretty, once, once it's all built out and everything. So it'll be pretty good. And then also um, all three of those that presented, they were, they all did a great job. I looked at all three of those and they. It, it's hard to pick between the three because each one of them had some really big benefits. And so, yeah, it'll be, it'll be interesting going through all that to, to figure out the right one. But yeah, it's exciting.
Do we have it on a, a future meeting to have a discussion item about that and get the presentation? And get all the particulars before we're asked to approve it that evening?
Uh, we can have the design team come in and um you can, we can introduce you to them. Um, there. Uh, we had the selection team already met um to uh interview the teams and ask questions. And so, yeah, we can bring the selected team uh on September eleventh so that you can meet them and have that discussion before we approve it.
But it's gonna be on the agenda for the September eleventh to approve it or not?
Uh, it'll be a recommendation to negotiate.
Yeah, cause I think the final um contract.
Contract will be.
October.
Yeah, probably, probably.
This will be the meeting to discuss it. It's not, it's not a final decision.
The final decision would occur probably in the second meeting of October.
Perfect, that's, I was thinking that was clear.
And while we're.
Vote in the same night?
While we're going through negotiations and everything, we can always change horses midstream if we need to. It's just an authorization to start the negotiations.
Yep.
Um, and then on the topic of crosswalks, we have met with the school district. Their um. Continued construction on Ridgeview, we are working on that. We're trying to work with the contractor. Uh, trying to uh make sure that the contractor is aware of school hours and it starts on Mondays and all of that stuff. So we gave them a um span of time to do the work on Ridgeview, the mill and overlay that was needed near the high school. Um, they completed that work yesterday. Um, there was a little bit of overlap uh with the construction that. Um, I think they had one last load of asphalt that needed to go down. Um, right as school was letting out at the high school. And we went ahead and authorized them to go ahead and complete that work because. Asphalt has a certain time period before it cools off and it's not acceptable anymore. So it was a few minutes past the release time. So I do apologize if there was any confusion or conflicts or anything like that with uh people letting out for school. So we tried to work as much, as well as we could with the contractor, but we also needed to make sure that we stayed within the one hour time zone. Or the, the uh temperatures uh for setting that asphalt. Um, they will be working on the sidewalk. Hopefully the sidewalk will be put in tomorrow or next week. So hopefully they'll be able to do that. I will remind them that there is no school on Tuesday. So that would be a really good time for them to install that, that sidewalk. Uh, the big delay is they've had to um special order a galvanized steel plate. To put under the, the sidewalk because there is a flume to direct some stormwater and it'll go under the sidewalk. Um, that had to be special ordered. So that was part of the, the delay. Been working with them, trying to get this done over the summer and it just, the stars and the moon did not align. And we're working on it and trying to get that in. Uh, pavement marking, I hope those will be in um by next week as well. Um, and then separately, there have been some complaints about um Wolf Creek Elementary and some of the construction traffic and everything. We're working directly with the contractor to um put up some extra signage, to talk to their um dump truck. Drivers to make sure that they're um very cautious right there with the crosswalk um right there at the school. So continued conversations. We've got a great relationship with the school district and continue to um make these adjustments as we need to.
Thank you very much. Deputy Madam Clerk? Mrs. Dunn? Mrs. Jones?
No report.
Mr. Spear?
No report.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number one.
Still ten minutes?
Think so.
Ten minutes, good. Okay. Uh, move the city council recess, or does anybody need a break, I guess?
Does anybody need a break? Five-minute break?
Five-minute break, okay. Uh, move city council recess into executive session for ten minutes for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property presented to KSA. Seventy-five forty-three nineteen B six of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The opening was zooming the camp, city, or the city council chambers at. So what, eight forty, wait, no, yeah, eight fifty-seven PM, eight fifty-eight PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following, Lane Massey and Spencer Lau.
Second. Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in an open meeting at 8:58 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number two.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 7543-19B6, the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The opening meeting will resume and the city council chambers at... what?
Are they on the right line?
Amy.
They're just trying to get us riled up.
This is not the first time tonight. Not the second time tonight. Let's go with 9:15 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey, City Administrator; Rhonda Dunn, Finance Director; Jacob Spear; Public Works Director; Allison Abel, City Engineer; Spencer Lau, City Attorney.
Second. Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0-0. Alright, welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in an open meeting at 9:15 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0-0. Have a great night, everyone.